Devin Marto.
Here.
Bill Corrigan.
Here.
George Hall.
Here.
May and Margaret Stevie.
Here.
All right, we will now start going over the budget as stated in the combined budget meeting here.
Before we do that, Jim wants to just run down a few, a few things.
You can do that, Mike. You can, you can do that. I'm not in a hurry.
Okay. Just fly, Jim. I'm just gonna go through some of the highlights. If anybody has any questions, you can let me know. The tax revenue for the general fund is gonna remain steady. We expect it to remain steady based on the assessments. Allagani County, I know they're in the works of trying to do a reassessment, so just keep eye on the news. Hopefully that'll help us a little bit. Some of the expenses that have increased are due to the ongoing contractual agreements with the Tim serves and the, and the public works and case contract. Some of the things, as everybody has felt in their own pocketbook, is the, just the rate of inflation on a lot of supplies. One of the things that we're gonna be able to do to offset the, some of these price increases is some interfund transfer. One of the things we haven't done in years past is using the sewer revenue fund for some of our sewer projects. We always just buy material, but we never pay for our guys doing the work. They've always just come out of the general fund, so I will be transferring some of those costs from that. The garbage contract is going to increase. That's a four percent increase. So I'm recommending a four percent increase on the monthly garbage charge from eighteen forty-seven to nineteen twenty. That would be the first increase in four years. The electric, we're currently still in our current electric supply contract. That ends in twenty twenty-eight, so we really need to be thinking about a new contract, only because it kind of leveled it off if we approach them, maybe not this year, but in, at the end of twenty-five, twenty-six. You're, we'll get a little bit of a bump earlier than what we're paying now, but it will smooth things out going down four years. Who knows with, with the new administration, how a lot of that's gonna change with the energy prices. One of the problems is our, as a country, our electrical energy is going way up with these data centers and electric vehicles, and we don't have the capacity to produce the energy we used to produce. They've closed a lot of the pole. The, the wind and solar isn't paying off like they expected, so, and, you know, they killed nuclear fifteen, twenty years ago. So hopefully some things change there. The twenty twenty-five budget as presented recommends an increase in the customer monthly service charge. As everybody knows, three years ago, we had a lot of power outages due to some infrastructure that Duquesne Light had to upgrade, well, they upgraded it, and of course, they charged us for it. One of the things when they do that, they can't give you what it costs right away. They have to do it gradually over a three-year period. So the first year, we paid the third of the cost, second year, two-thirds of the cost. This is gonna be the third year, we're gonna be at a hundred percent. So that's about eleven thousand dollars a month, up from seventy-seven hundred a month. Not much changes in sewer fund. There, there is an increase by Alka-Sand, which has nothing to do with Borough Council. Borough Council passed a resolution accepting that increase because they have to do that as an official action to tell Wiltonburg Pendulum Water Authority that, yeah, that's what you need to bill our customers at. Capital fund, our man Don here has done an awful lot, him and Dan with grants, he's won a work done. We've had a lot of complaints with what's going down out of Wall Avenue, but you have to think that it's a million-dollar project and actual borough funds is only about a hundred and forty thousand that the borough's taken out of its part of the vehicles. So that's, that's really a, a big plus. Some of the grants that we have in place. The Joe Marquez Exports Complex. We were just awarded two-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-one-hundred-dollar grant for, that's gonna include construction of a comfort station, pickleball courts, pedestrian walkway, and an internal loop trail. That goes along with a hundred-and-twenty-one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-one-dollar grant that we got two years ago, two years ago, and last year, or I guess it was this year, we put a hundred-and-forty thousand aside from the ARPA fund, funds. So, I mean, that's a five-hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-dollar project that honestly, you know, with it being ARPA funds, it's not using any of our, our pick-down paddock. The Highland Avenue Sewer Repairs, six-hundred-ninety-seven-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirty. That's a non-match grant that they're thinking of planning. We have a fifty-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-dollar traffic light control grant for the two traffic signals at Broadway and Center and Broadway and Mall. The Jewel Way Improvement Grant is a hundred-and-sixty-thousand-dollar grant. The borough match on that is thirty-two thousand. That can be in con, so we can actually use our guys' labor and machinery to cover that thirty-two thousand. This, I mean, I'm glad we're getting this money, but I'm a little disappointed in the amount because it was a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar project for Britain Avenue. We were awarded a hundred thousand dollars for that, so in Don's engineering report, we'll see that we're doing a phase-two grant application for six-hundred-some-thousand-plus. I got a phone call last week. The Allagani County Health Department Air Quality Program Clean Air Fund Application for Electrification of Municipal Equipment that I applied for, they told me that they are recommending that for approval. That was fifty-two thousand dollars. Couple meetings ago, I gave everybody a spreadsheet with the string trimmers, backpack blowers, several chainsaws, and a, an actual riding mower that they claim will, will cut for eight hours. We can get one of our employees to cut for eight hours. That would be great. But that's it. We still have our bond, regular bond payments, a hundred-and-forty thousand dollars. We're in the last year of our AIM loan. That's thirty-three thousand. Twenty-five's the last year we'd have to pay that. And we have one more fifty-three thousand dollar payment for our readers, and then that comes along.
Mike, my only question was regarding the K-9 program. Do you think we need to up that estimate based on last year's?
Well, he didn't tell me he was going to go for any more training, so if he doesn't, if he doesn't go for other than the eighteen-hundred-dollar training that he, that he, is like a maintenance training.
Right.
That we should be below that number.
Okay.
You know, and the, and the other thing, too, that put that, that total over was the cost of the cage for the new vehicle.
Right.
And we were supposed to pay for that in twenty-three, and it didn't come in until twenty-four. So that was, that was over six thousand dollars, so without that, we're at fifteen thousand. The budget would have, would have hit perfect.
Under your grant awards, we got one today from Markosik on a grant that Scott filled out for sixty-five thousand for a new police car.
For a new police car, yeah. I, you know, if he's not here, that was, that was his to announce.
I told him I'd announce it.
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure. I mean, I know he told everybody about it, so.
Scott's sick tonight, but he did a lot of paperwork and stuff to get a grant submitted for this, another police car, so we got the notification today that that was approved for sixty-five thousand dollars. So there'll be another new police car on the streets, which is much needed to add to the grant list. We paid, what, thirty, thirty-eight for the last one?
Thir-, yeah, it was thirty-seven and some change, but the sixty-five's gonna cover a new light bar. I don't know what the, this is gonna be a twenty-five car. We, we kind of got a, I left there a twenty-four, so I'm sure the price will be better. It's gonna be the new vehicle, the light bar.
Computer.
The computer, and it'll cover the.
Cage.
The cage.
Is that the car we have now?
No, this is additional.
This is an additional. We probably won't get it, yeah. Now, they, they told me a month ago that it was five hundred dollars if you ordered a car, so. Scott's gonna get the commitment letter, take it to the dealer, get the car ordered and hooking it out of White Marsh River.
It was an SUV, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, other than the charger, I don't think anybody else makes it. I don't think the cars, they, they do the parts anymore. I don't think Ford does it.
The, the, the increase of the price of why you're talking thirty-seven, thirty-eight to sixty-five is this, this other car already had a lot of, like, the computer wasn't a needed expense and stuff, for this new one, we don't actually have it playing around or anything, so we'll have to actually have it all brand-new installed, so. It's, it was nice of Markosik and them to take into account that extra cost.
One of the things with electric that we have to think about in the next couple of years, the switch gear and the telephone poles, if you're pulling in towards fire station number one on the right-hand side across from the substation, the, the poles are really old for that. We had Mike Lewis come out, him and Jim kind of went over the plan of what, what to do. We still have, Jim thinks maybe five years, which probably would consider getting it done in two, just to be safe. We have varying estimates. Mike didn't think it was as expensive as Jim does, so, and we are gonna have to contract it, it's, it's a lot of work. But I think Jim and Mike can pretty much come up with a plan so we don't have to shut power off. We can run some wires temporarily, and that'll make it easier to get everything down, basically from Center and Broadway back to that, that switch gear into the substation. Other than that, I know, I know we have to order some poles, 'cause, you know, accidents and such.
Well, actually, on, can I just talk about that substation?
Yeah.
Because I got some changes. I also looked at the poles going up center, the main power feed poles, all the way to Eleanor, and the exception of the one I put at the corner across from the, you know, the salon right there, they all need changed also. So the, to do it to keep power on, I have a cone to what's called a, it's a company called Hendrix, and they make wire that you can put up on poles that can touch each other. It's insulated wire. So we have to run that all the way up on a separate set of poles temporarily, all the way up to Eleanor to feed North Pickarren and the hill, and then we need to run poles in the parking lot to start that, and then to branch out to feed this side of town and down that side of town. So you need four circuits coming from the substation, and then you need to change all that wire from the substation, the switching poles, and all the way up to Eleanor. So, you know, Mike estimated sixty thousand. I'm thinking two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand. Yeah, there's a lot of work there.
Sounds like a lot of work.
Yeah, and then, I mean, the labor alone's gonna be pretty high, and if you're going to shut down the substation and do all that, you might as well do all them, those feeds now, get it all done now. So it's just something to think about.
What kind of cost do we want to add?
I, I, I'm just thinking around two-hundred-and-fifty to three-hundred thousand.
Okay.
How long does a project like that take? That sounds like it's time-consuming.
Depends on how big of a crew they bring. I don't know, the only person that probably can handle something like that would be Sergeant Electric, so it'd be a pretty big job.
The good news, I mean, we, we have a hundred-and-two thousand in the bank for the electric system now, so, you know, some of these, these interfund transfers that I have in the budget, you know, we'll just have to put into that the plan for that next, next year, too.
And as far as the substation, the other thing that we, you know, we got this, the transformer that was leaking was fixed. However, the switch, one of the switches went bad in the back of the substation. I have that jumpered out right now, and I'm going to be installing that in, hopefully late December, hopefully early December after Christmas when it comes in. That is going to involve a town-wide outage.
How long?
Fast as I can get up and change it. An hour and a half, maybe? I'm hoping no longer than that.
Two and a half?
I seen him do it easy. I seen him do it. It's probably gonna be a half hour.
I'm coordinating it with Duquesne Light so that I can eliminate going to two sets of switches. If they can hit the, hit the interrupters out on Broadway, then I won't have to even go to those other switches, which will save a ton of time, and then you're right, if I can do that, I bet forty-five minutes.
Yeah. And we'll, we'll, we'll probably schedule that in, like we did the last one.
On Christmas Day?
One of those cars.
Sound good.
Yeah.
Break for dinner time.
Dinner time.
I think we do it like a Sunday morning, I was thinking, early. Figure a way to get, maybe the fire truck can give us some lights while we do it, and if we could do it Sunday morning, I could probably.
What about the churches that operate Sunday morning and their Sunday schools?
I was planning on doing this around six AM. What time do they start?
Well, I know that ours has nine-thirty, nine-forty-five. I don't know about what Zion, when they start.
You think they'd start any earlier than seven AM?
No.
Yeah, it'll be.
Well, they do, they start the heat, because we turn it down.
It should be done by seven AM.
Okay.
I mean, unless, I can wait, or I'll do it on a Sunday, I can do it on a weekday. It's up to you guys. You tell me when you want me to do it. Once the switch comes in, but it has to be changed, and I, and I don't meet, I don't meet requirements to do it hot. I can't do it hot.
Okay.
And then I guess you know that my plans, you know what I'm doing, right?
When is what?
January, maybe the second week in January, and then I'm gonna take my vacation, and I'll be, like, done full-time, and then work part-time, if you want me still to.
We want you to stay full-time, Jim, but, but we'll take what we can get.
And wait, one more thing. You know the bucket truck is down, the big, the new one?
I, I hadn't told them about that, Jim, so you go ahead and explain that.
What, we took it to get ser-, a tire changed. It could be just coincidence now that I've been talking to the people from Roanoke, Virginia, but we took it to get a tire change, and I told McGill's they can, they can jack it up using the outriggers, but it was the tire on one side, they jacked the whole truck up, and then the, the PTO won't turn, that's a power takeoff that runs everything, it won't turn back on. So we troubleshooted, probably, what, four hours we worked today with the people from Roanoke, Virginia, and it, they can't find it, so tomorrow, I'm gonna go up to Bowser, 'cause I tried calling today, and you just, like, forget about it. So I'm just gonna drive up there and see if they can service it up there. We might need a, a PTO control module, or, what else did he say it was? That, that cluster, the switch cluster, there might be something wrong in there. We don't know, we don't know. Hopefully it's not the PTO, 'cause that's gonna be expensive.
Yeah.
Is that under the truck where they would've jacked it up and possibly bumped it?
Well, no, uh-uh, there's nothing to bump. You know, it's partially my fault, 'cause I told them to use the outriggers to jack it up, but I never thought they would jack up the whole truck when the tire's only on one side, and I'm not even sure that's what did it. It, it, it might have not did it, it might have been just coincidence. I don't know. But I'll know more when I talk to Bowser tomorrow, see if they can service it, and not, we have to take it to pickleball. My point to all this is, because I've been using forty-five-foot poles everywhere, the little truck won't reach them. So if we have a, like, that pole I put in on Wall Avenue, I had to cut some of the top of it off, 'cause I couldn't reach it, which I don't like to do, 'cause I try to meet requirements, but I have a choice. So I'm a little concerned if we get a pole, something happens to a pole that already has real high lines on it, and I can't get up there to fix it, but we have to just take that chance, 'cause I don't know how long it's gonna take to get the truck working. Right now, it's a useless truck. So just be aware. Hopefully nothing will happen.
Nobody do anything stupid, okay?
All right. Anything else with the budget here? Is that pretty much all the highlights?
Should I bring up the crossing guards, or is it too late?
No.
You wanna make, you wanna make that a comment? Go ahead.
Normally, every year, give the crossing guards an hour a day raise. For whatever reason, last year, I think two years, they didn't get the raise. So I'd like to up them, remember, it's generally not a, the gateway pays happiness. 'Cause, no, they're, they're not that many hours. This year, with the junior high opening, the trucks were, or the school buses were late getting back to town, some after five o'clock, but not all corners. So I'd like to try to make up for that. I mean, if you come down to it, they're making about, what do we figure, ten dollars a day?
An hour.
An hour.
I thought we raised them last year.
Yeah, I thought we did.
It didn't go through, Jeff. I think everybody's seen their thing, or I called Jim Rollow, he, yeah.
Well, I'll double-check in a minute, so that may have been an oversight on our part, the payroll department.
Yeah. We called it an arrest.
Yes, we did.
Well, I, I couldn't, the office was real busy today, so I called two guards, and the one guard said, you know, we haven't had a raise, and she said, I'm, I know two years, and I think three, but the other guard, she said, call the other guard. So I just called two of them, by now it's four o'clock. When it hit me what happened, and I thought, you know, now's the time to bring it up. I mean, you know, the buses seem to be doing better. It seemed to be that the buses coming from the new junior high were making very good time coming across twenty-two early across, and then one of the newer drivers had come to Agatha, he finally got on to, someone must have included in a shorter route to Compton Tugger somehow, he didn't have to get out on forty-eight. So they started to shorten up their time, but the bad part of it, as the children were on the bus, so.
It's a long, yeah, it's a long ride.
It makes it a long day.
Mike, you'll look into that. Yeah, I'll, I'll double-check it, and then the, the salary ordinance that I sent you, that, that, I would have, just have to change that. What? You have something else?
Thank you. I mean, you know, we're really hurt, and it's thanks to George's hard time.
A dollar, a dollar costs about nine hundred dollars a year.
Is that with the half of?
That's, that's, 'cause it costs us fifty percent.
Can't, can't we give them two dollars to catch up?
Well, that's we need to see, if that's, if that's the case, then we need to get them.
If that's the case, then yeah.
Yeah, if the case is, they didn't get one last year, and they were supposed to, absolutely.
Yeah, so they would go to forty-one. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
Do you want more money? Go ask them.
I'd say at the beginning, beginning of the year, the middle school, the left-hand didn't know what the right-hand was doing. I mean, it was a total.
It was a mess.
A mess. So, I mean.
And the sad part was the little ones on the bus.
And no doubt, and.
Yeah, they wouldn't have had it in a micro.
And there's. The buses coming out on forty-eight.
All right, everybody, that's.
And three, three lights.
That was the budget. If any, is there any questions for Mike before we? Whenever you.
Have we talked about trying to deal with our budget?
Yeah, yeah, the, the numbers are still getting processed.
I know, we had that pretty limited area. The proposed, the proposed budget is, is over there. The only thing that needs to change would be the, a little bit on the crossing guards. And. Right now, we have a twenty-eight-thousand-dollar surplus, so.
We, we have a minute before we start that, so. I'm not going anywhere, but.
Yeah.
Mike. Planning meeting tomorrow, somebody needs keys to get them, Billy.
Okay, who?
Harry, I guess. Harry still have keys?
No, he turned it in, but I, I've been calling tomorrow.
I just got a text message saying somebody won't be at the meeting tomorrow. I'm like, do you hope? Knock me.
You wanna call, Matt?
Do we have to do the pledge and the thing over again?
No.
I'm so happy he doesn't wanna listen.
We're gonna get, Matt couldn't be here tonight, so our solicitor's gonna be by phone if we're gonna get him.
No, Matt just did text me, he said his associate's coming, Savannah, but he still wants to be on the phone.
Okay.
Well, that's nice, he's a lot of good supporters.
She wants to, she wants to come and meet everybody. Is there Matt?
Is there?
Okay. Savannah's not here yet, any more time? She's coming?
I think he's in the hallway.
Oh.
Oh.
We can check.
There's any touch in it, it's locked.
Yep.
Well, no. Just pull on the handle.
Okay, I just don't wanna hear anything.
Hi, Miss Savannah, nice to meet you.
Tom's here, President.
Hi.
Bill Corrigan. Lisa Petrowski.
Hi.
I'm sorry, Matt, I'm making introductions. Dominic Roberta.
Hi.
Our mayor, Betsy Stevie.
Hi, nice to meet you.
Sir Engineer, Don Black. Jim Rollow's on council, and Des Martin.
Hi, nice to meet you all.
Nice meeting you.
All right, so we will move on. We have, the first thing we have here is citizens, well, we'll get to that in a minute. Do I hear a motion to approve? I have it, Devin.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, council meeting, combined meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, seconded. Any questions on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We did hold multiple executive sessions. The first one was October fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, for Personnel Matter. The second one was November sixth, twenty twenty-four, for Personnel Matter, and the other one was tonight, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, for Personnel Matter. We will now move on to citizens' comment, and I have one person to speak, and it's George Barkhart.
I can't.
Go ahead, start.
I don't know where we stand with this, but I'll tell you where, what I did, and I talked to a few people in council. The food bank, next month is the last month that they're coming in. I talked to some people, and I got phone numbers at food bank, and I still haven't got a true answer back, but I have kind of an answer back. They're hunting for an organization to take it and name it, you know, like, so I talked to them, and I told them that the Lions would probably be interested in doing it, but I won't know until tomorrow night, but more like what we talked at our meeting and all that, the Lions, if we have to, we'd sign up and say that we're responsible.
Okay.
The way it stands now, I see in here, it'd be using the parking lot, I don't know what we're planning on doing or whatever, but if they give it to the Lions, and we do it the way it was in the past, and we're trying to change it in different ways and all that, and work with them as much as we can work with us and try to get it organized, but as it is right now, they bring us to produce stuff, they would not bring us to meet. And they said that we would have to have, like, twelve people here to hand out it and maintain it. Whatever's left, it's up to us to get rid of. Now, I can't say that we'll have leftovers, I can't say we won't have leftovers. I know in the last year, we might have had a box of this or a box of that, and most of the time, I took it down to high-rise and got rid of it. If there was too much, I talked to Tara, and Tara phoned a couple people in town to give it to, or I phoned some people, or somebody knew somebody. We got rid of it that way. I'm hoping that we don't have more than that to worry about, but I have a few other food banks in the area that said if we have it left, they're gradually taking, and they have freezers and refrigerators and all that to put in. But we can get to produce, but we will not get to meat.
Why not the meat?
I, Bill, let me interject here. Today, Jordan returned my call. Well, I can thank you and thank you for your phone calls and reaching out. I spoke with Mark. I spoke with Markosik, and I spoke with Jordan from the Pittsburgh Food Bank, who we originally set the walkthrough up. So he's going back to the board right now because I told him that half the time, the veggies and the fruits are leftover, other than the apples. But there's a lot of that leftover, as you said, that wouldn't be left. In speaking with him, he's going to go back to.